Due diligence and the land and the willingness to support. You know, potentially this project happening in our town. That's that's a huge. It's gonna take a lot.
Yeah.
More than that too.
Yeah.
Just um financially and kind of politically.
Yep.
The town's gonna have to, the you know, board, housing committee, uh myself. You know, do a good job of communicating to the community that this is, you know, it's not. Uh we're just trying to meet a specific need, a need that's in the newspaper every single week. Like it's on BPR, it's on NPR, it's on, you know, there's this um, you know, issue. It's just continually talked about, we're trying to, you know, fix that issue.
The number one economic issue in the.
Not fixed, we're trying to aid, offer some aid to that issue because this is not gonna solve, you know, all the housing problems, but hopefully it'll.
But that's where we we can, we're gonna continue to have to do a lot of work because a lot of people aren't gonna be overjoyed or or understand what we're trying to accomplish or.
Uh okay, I'm. I'll quiet down.
I mean, a lot of the points you may I think would be for the, you know, let's say, they go through this and we do want to move forward. Then, yes, those details I think will be massively important.
Yep.
Brian, maybe, Brian, maybe we get with Jeremy and get a a time, like a wireframe of a timeline and then action items?
Yeah, with some performance benchmarks that uh we can hold them accountable to ensure they're moving forward at a judicious pace. And um I actually think it's reasonable to say that, you know, the town has committed to support some of the predevelopment costs, I believe. And so I think you could put something in here regarding that you want those to be matched, I don't know, dollar for dollar, that wouldn't be unreasonable.
Well, that, yes, I I like that just from the standpoint of intent and, you know, again, something like that's where the ownership of the project too, that. You know, I I guess when I read the 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 agreement, I was reading it too much like it sounded like we're just gonna, oh, we wanna go ahead with this then. You know, where's the deed, let me sign it over to you. And I'm like, that's not the, yeah, that makes sense.
There'd be a whole separate agreement.
So just having, you know, a little bit more of the intent of how how things could move forward.
Yeah, so in talking to Scott, that's the legal structure is something that he's gonna, you know, the funding is what's gonna drive a lot of the.
Yep.
Um opportunity um and the legal structure with the town involved, I think, becomes more flexible.
And that's why I think a lot of.
From a funding.
Funders are gonna want the town involved and potentially having like a stake in whatever. Yes, that, you know, we're not gonna cause them trouble now.
I don't think so, I I think it's, it'll be viewed positively.
Right.
In the funding process.
Yeah.
And then, you know, as far as the really nitty gritty nuts and bolts of it, you know, the hope is to try to. Um move the design along a little bit, get feedback, get input. Uh if you wanna pick house colors, if they don't like this house there, they want this one there. Uh you know, we can try to uh incorporate those types of discussions.
So I'm thinking of what, you know, you kind of years ago, you kind of talked a little bit about Culver Lane and how that worked, and now we continue to have a say in. Well, it's really, what is Culver Lane or which one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's the same general, so the town is a mortgage holder, the town got a block grant, passed it through. Um it holds a mortgage on the. The property.
Which gives us the ability to.
So Alison and Frank, do you have any questions? Just, I wanna be clear, the intent here is to get them started on due diligence. At the end of that period, they'll come back to us with a report saying it's feasible, it's not feasible, here's how we see a path forward. At that point, either one of us could step away. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that is how this is structured, yep. There's a certain implied, you know, there's good faith implied in negotiation so that you you couldn't just say, you know what? We we just don't feel like doing this because we just don't feel like it, like that wouldn't be, you'd have to have good justification for it, but yeah.
Thank you. Um anybody in the audience have any questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, um is this pre-involvement agreement, is that something that's been shared? Cause I just haven't seen that at all? In terms of what we guys are even discussing, you know, the terms and.
Uh the board's seeing it tonight for the first time.
Okay, and will that be disseminated, Rob, to on the town website or?
I wouldn't say until it's finalized, correct?
Yeah, okay.
We've we've got a lot of kind of back and forth to come.
Yeah, it's in the draft form now where there's gonna be additional information added to it. Um and I, we will consult with our consultant.
Right, okay.
Putting it on there, but I I think when we get to, when we get it to a point where um there's probably not gonna be a bunch of different changes, then yeah, it would be. We'd be able to put it on there. You think that's okay, Brian?
Yeah, it's not, I, there's nothing in it right now that is particularly uh trade secrets or proprietary, so it's really. It's your call about, you know, when you're ready to make that public, but yeah, I think based on tonight's feedback and some of the work that Scott. Himself is doing, I think it'll be revised pretty quickly, Jeremy moves pretty quickly, we all have a holiday next week, so it could be. It could be a couple of weeks out, but uh pretty quickly, it'll be ready.
And then just, is there ever, you know, a lot of the townspeople, excuse me, that I've spoken to, just the overriding concern is. Will there be a vote for the actual townspeople to have a say in this, or is it just the select committee that gets to decide? Uh on this, the project itself, the actual development? As well as this agreement?
Um it's on.
I think that's what Michael, Michael Flood was was touching on as well.
Uh it's unclear at this point, I think we're still working through feasibility and what the structure is gonna look like. But that's certainly a question that we'll have to answer at some point.
Right, that's what I would hope so, it'd be a vote, yeah.
We're we're months and months out from anything turning real, so to speak. So I would just say for anyone who's concerned, right, stay engaged with the process, come to the discussion meetings, I think there's one on December sixteenth.
Uh noth- nothing yet, but soon.
Well, so just stay involved and pay attention and.
Yeah, the the input stuff won't start until we actually get this document signed and start to work.
Can I make a point, it's Michael Flood? Yeah, you know, I'm just getting involved in this right now, so I kinda wanna turn up the heat a little bit. I haven't been involved, so I wanna be involved, so all of a sudden, if you're gonna do something that all of a sudden stops. Like if you gives you a whole nine months where we can't back out as a town, like then that gives the opposition a lot of time. To, you know, keep moving this thing, so I think as a town. You know, my goal is to get people to come up, you know, wake them up and be like, you know what's going on here, and then you guys have to be able to pull the plug. I mean, that's where I'm coming with this, so.
Or or we make an argument to the the um housing is needed for the community.
Yeah, listen, I'm just getting involved, like, right, I'm just getting involved right now, so whatever you do tonight, don't start stopping the clock. And putting nine months, all right, because you guys are at the table.
Michael, Michael, you gotta back. Yeah. Let you know, we've, we were the ones who started this process and put out an RFP looking for people who would be willing to work with us. On making this project happen. It's the developers who came in and said, I've got a deal for you, so.
Yeah, I know, you got, you guys are the enemy, quite honestly.
Position of, you know, we we've, you know, I have, we're looking for people who are willing to work with us.
Yeah, listen, you're talking to the other party, like you should be talking to me, I'm living in the town. And you guys are making all these, all these plans and stuff, so now I wanna be a part of it.
So come to the meeting.
Yeah, come to the meeting.
Hey, I'll start, I'll start coming, but what you need to do, don't sign something tonight where all of a sudden you're like, well, we got nine months, we can't get out of this thing. So I wanna turn up the heat, I wanna stop it, so don't turn, don't sign anything now where, you know, you tell me, no, Mike, you should have been here, I'm I'm gonna be there.
No one's signing anything.
No one's.
All right, don't sign anything, because, you know, so so a lot of people are just afraid to say stuff about this. Because it doesn't look good when you're like, yeah, I don't wanna have this housing and stuff like that, but um, I don't know, you're at the point where you gotta bring everybody in.
We're we're working on uh um what's uh a longstanding community effort on a. Uh issue that's really impactful to the community, so that's.
Yeah, I know, I pay, I pay, I pay the bills.
For years, for years.
Well, good, I'm join, I'm joining you now, I'm joining now, I I pay the taxes for years, I, you know, I pay the taxes. You guys are elected to represent us, and now I'm coming to the table, I'm not happy about it.
Okay, you can be, yeah.
So.
All right, so.
Just so you understand, this isn't, we didn't just sit down tonight and throw this out.
Yeah, most of, most other people have stuff going on, and we rely on you guys not to stand up us in the backs.
Can I, can I finish what I'm trying to say, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
The last two town meetings, we've put, this has been on the agenda for public discussion, we, this is not hidden. We have finally gotten to the point where we've worked through the process to that we have some ideas that are actual concrete and we're saying.
Housing committee.
The housing committee's been at it forever, so.
Yo, listen, anybody who joins the housing committee is on one side of it, they're not on my side, they're not paying the bills. So, I mean, normal people don't sit around on the housing committee.
This is not the time for.
Michael.
All right, we'll we'll take this out.
So, no, no, I'll I'll be in touch, okay, this is.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, I'll I'll be in touch, I'll, um, once we get to the point where we are gonna have some engagement sessions, I'll I'll, you know, send you an invite and. Get you to come.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay.
All right, anybody else in the audience?
Yeah.
JD, yeah.
Is there a budget for the town, or do we have an order of magnitude of what, besides your time?
Sure.
Sure. Uh. That's what's being worked out in this pre-development agreement, which we don't really know yet. What the uh full cost fact, uh Rob just alluded to. Fact that we we're not even close to finalizing the pre-development agreement because we're waiting for the cost estimates to come in.
I I mean.
So the, so in the fifty thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, I mean, you know.
In the RFP, um, in the RFP, JD, we've put in um that the town would, this was an up to number, right? So for the pre-construction and uh pre-development stuff, it'd be up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then for the baseline infrastructure needed to try to incentivize the the senior and workforce housing, um up to around two million. Um and that's.
That, well, that's where you have a development agreement, you're talking about, this is what we would do.
Correct, yeah, that's once you get into like, you know, shovels in the ground and stuff, but for right now, the the early phase, the pre-construction stuff is. Uh up to two hundred and fifty thousand is what we, what we put in the RFP.
So if you're still up to process, that that money's all at risk for the town, I don't know.
Whatever we put in, whatever whatever share that we agreed to in this, that would be, yeah, that would be the skin of the game.
Grant, grant money for, you know, some portions of that, we expect to.
I'm sorry.
We've we've been applying for grants to to pay for portions of, you know, typically apply for a grant, there's some some level of funding we have to provide to get the grant. Grant funding as well.
For instance, one of the things that's needed is a market study, uh the last meeting, um and um one of the other neighbors. You know, brought up the need for a market study, so that's what we're gonna do, um we got a proposal a while ago. And we've applied for a planning grant to help fund that, the the planning grant will cover like thirty thousand of the thirty eight thousand dollar. Bill, um and the thirty, you know, the whatever we bring to the table through that mechanism would would go toward that two fifty. Um we've also applied for other um kind of pre-construction engineering type grant. Um through the Northern Borders Regional Commission, and that was for up to a hundred thousand. Um and that's a, that would again go toward that that two fifty.
Global state, state program, yeah, uh state, federal, yeah, yep.
And the money we spent so far has been ARPA funds, is that right?
Um. Yes, for the most part, yeah, the first, the um, some of the first early environmental work was was um town funds. But um most of, all the admin work, um the White and Burke consulting effort. Um everything, a lot of, most of the stuff to get us to this point has been ARPA. What do we have so far, what have we discussed so far roughly? Um and this is over, I mean, we've been doing envi- environmental stuff since like. Let's say two thousand nineteen-ish, because it was a, when we first got the property, yeah, when we first got the property, Alison sat on the. So committee that did a kind of review of like, what should we do uh with the property, one of uh a couple of things. Uh one was to build this building here, which we now sit here. Um and I think number three on the list of five was was housing, um as well as, you know, wreck and trails and stuff like that. Um so since since that two thousand eighteen, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I think. Um and that's a lot of, a lot of engineering, a lot of environmental review. A lot of precursor work that will hopefully make this this due diligence uh effort a little smoother. Uh more efficient for the developer to try to further incentivize the uh the process.
Okay. I think we've had enough of this tonight, um the next order of business is um.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome, see you soon, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Nick, uh Zayak is here from the Benedict County Regional Commission to. Present about uh tier one B.
Awesome. So, so I'm gonna move up a little bit so you can, your mic can pick me up, um so thank you for having me tonight. Um I have a couple of slides on on one B and we're, so. So tier one B is uh is something that plays into the broader discussion you guys have been having for a long time on housing. And ultimately, this is, this is a, this came out of Act two eighty-one, which just passed last year. Which was meant to, and will add the regional Act two fifty review to certain properties. And or in certain areas and allow for opportu- the opportunity for municipalities to opt in. To reduce the Act two fifty review on certain projects that those being housing projects and mixed use projects. Under fifty units, under, on less than ten acres of land. Um the Act two fifty process can slow projects for months and cost many thousands of dollars and and. They also reduce the amount of local control on these projects by adding a regional level of review. And feedback and impact that wouldn't be present if you had an exemption. Um what are areas that that can have this, they must have public water or sewer or really good septic soils. Um they have to be outside the river quarter and flood plain, or you have to have townwide rules on those. Uh and they have to be in mapped village areas and village centers or downtowns. Um importantly, for your case, you can choose to apply to, apply for. Uh the opt-in for this, for to only one or more of your centers if you have more than one, like you guys do. Um you have to have local zoning, you have to have staff time to manage the extra bit of burden that the permitting would put on your town. And you have to sign an opt-in um resolution, so in, what I'm using as an example is the typical marginal project. Is gonna be smaller than the than we were looking at for Raptor, something like six to fourteen units, but adding this opt-in. Certainly is a, works in the direction that the town has been working for a number of years. Um so we've, in discussion with the planning commission, we've drafted drafted up some proposed tier one B boundaries. Um these would cover the, cover Raptor Lane and areas to the south. Um importantly, it would almost certainly not apply to the the primary project on Raptor, but we wanna give. But we encourage you to map the parcel like this in case it does become relevant. Um adding a tool to your toolbox is never a bad thing in this kind of situation. And as well as mapping the areas immediately around it uh in a contextual way, so. Notably, this works off the brand new shiny uh requested by Rob and and worked on by us, uh. South Dorset Village Center that is a new town center that. That acknowledges the work that you guys have put in, Missouri, building a town hall, having the quarry. Looking at recreation and planning recreational investments in the area, those are all things that are typical of a town center and. We have mapped town centers in places that have a lot less than that on a parcel or in the area, so. Um here's the same map without the uh future land use mapping underneath it, uh as you can see, you all know the area. Um I'm gonna note, I'm gonna look at and show you the other two centers that you can opt into. Um we have East Dorset Center with its new boundaries that cover, that meet new state mapping standards. We didn't include it in, and the planning commission didn't include it in its recommendation, because there's not really a lot of developed land in um in East Dorset. There's a couple of parcels that could really benefit from this, but they wa- it, there wasn't critical mass to opt. Or to recommend an opt-in there, it's relatively small potatoes compared to the other two uh centers. So, I thought I'd lose my West, so there we go, um you, West Dorset is also an option here. Uh we didn't include it in the initial mapping in part because of questions on the water service uh availability and the. But it would benefit a lot from this in as much as, there's a lot of parcels that could fit a small infill project on a backlot or something like that. But it wasn't included be in part because there wasn't, that wasn't the main push of this discussion in Dorset. So, what's next, uh you can, uh I sent Rob the resolution that would opt in. The South Dorset Center for for tier one B, but if you want to amend it to include either east or west Dorset. That would be an option on your, in your toolbox, it would become active in mid twenty twenty-six with the original plan. And just last night, Chasbury opted in for east southern centers and the, and Manchester opted in a little while ago. So we do expect Arlington and Bennington to come to the table in in the coming months, so. We imagine that we will end up with five one B towns if you guys do opt in for this center, um but. But that's kind of the context within which we're working, so here's the, a full map of the town, this is the fut- the future land use map as it stands with your new. Designated built center boundaries, um as well as where those one B uh areas could apply in context to each other. So, that's it, um any questions?
So, um so the one B only applies to the purple areas, potentially.
It, so I'll go back to.
Pick one, right?
Yeah, I'll go back to South Dorset, um so it it applies to the the, this magenta color and also. This pink color, which is a village area, which is more residential or less, has less civic infrastructure. So this, it really covers in this case some like insurance company offices and doctors' offices and things like that. Um that seemed a little bit more commercial and civic than the less dense surrounding areas to the south.
So inside the green line.
Inside the green line.
And we could, if we wanted to, adopt three summers?
You could adopt it for any, any or all of the three, uh so yeah, that, that's.
Right, actually, would we not just go ahead, you know, is there a downside to it?
It's all carrots, no sticks ultimately, and that, and this is something the state will work really hard to design. Um I certainly was in conversation with the, with Seth Bonkers when he was working on this bill, and one of the things that they, that the committees in the legislature took very seriously was. They'll want to directly have a say of opting in, so ultimately, we. Up, there's, there's very little downside to opting in, because ultimately, projects still get your local zoning. And they, you may even be better off and have more local control because you're not having people. Uh a committee that's disproportionately people from the South Shire, having an extra layer of say on top of what you're saying. Not that they're gonna disagree with you guys or have different goals or try to override your zoning, but having that extra layer of regional review. May not be something that everyone wants for everything, particularly these small six to ten unit projects that could be on a vacant lot or house that. Or a house burned down in the sixties or something like that type of situation that you can turn what may be. Something that faces a, an administrative cliff at six units that would trigger Act two fifty. To not face that administrative cliff, so yeah, it's, it's a really good idea in general. The RPCs are certainly encouraged to go and help you guys get this applying wherever it makes sense, but. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to, I I certainly would encourage that i- in part because that was the intent of all. To make it easier in these places that you already have utilities.
Are we under a time constraint at all?
So, if you, if you wanna opt in for this current round, the next couple of months would be ideal um to make this decision. So we expect the last of our resolutions to come through, maybe by January, but yeah, this isn't a, you have to make this decision tonight. Um but certainly, uh the next couple of months would be the timeline that we're trying to get this in.
Okay.
There will be an opportunity to opt in later, but we've heard mixed messages from the Land Use Review Board on, can you opt in? A day after our, like, our plan goes active in the summer of next year, or do you have to wait some period? When will they be ready to start taking the second round of one B applications? So if you wanna get, you know, on the train on the first ride, this is your opportunity, if you wanna wait till it comes right back around, wait till next summer.
Just for the, everybody in the room, so the context of this is the housing problems perceived as a problem. So much so at the state level that they're, they changed Act two fifty and they're um also changing regional. Uh plans to try to um, you know, figure out ways to incentivize housing in certain areas.
Having these conversations has been the dominating thing I'm doing this year, and it is the overriding issue in the state, certainly. Like, we, in reviewing your, the previously uh proposed housing targets, which are all advisory. This effort is meant to help you reach those advisory targets of what would be doing your fair share be? And the, and the goal is very much to make it so every community has the ability to hit. Those couple of units that may make the difference for someone's life.
And so the, the one B only applies to residential projects, not commercial?
Residential or, there's a mixed use component, but it needs to be primarily residential.
Ah, okay, so if someone.
You could do a live work situation.
But if someone wanted just a straight commercial project, the one B doesn't affect?
Yes, that is precisely it, um it was, this was a conversation that certainly came up in Manchester, and yeah, there are no provision for. Um for exempting any commercial from two fifty or eight ten, uh beyond this mixed use situation.
Great, awesome. Thank you, Nick, um what is the sense of the board? Conferencing or you wanna? I think, I, I mean, my initial feeling is we should opt in everything, just to have it. I don't see anybody doing anything in East Dorset, a couple of properties in Dorset maybe. Um but, you know, I advise people on Act of fifty all the time, and I tell them to go up to the limit and avoid it. And that might be, instead of building twelve units, you build eight, because there's the the cost to go through Act fifty, the time. The additional review, you're not, that that's not getting, you're not getting that back. We already have very good zoning and subdivision regulations, we're not skimping out on protecting the environment. Um neighbors and all that, so um for for this situation, if if there are a few projects that would benefit from not needing to go through Act of fifty. I think that's great. But I would like more time to think about it.
Yeah, tend to feel the same, I I I think, you know, as we're seeing tonight, to the extent that. I don't know how we get the word out to people more, but they hear something we're doing and, you know, allow people to have their input, but. And I've found like, you know, with the school boards and stuff, you you try like heck to get the word out, and everybody says, you know. You're, you're doing this in secret, and it's like, we're not trying to, but you know, making a decision like this, I think it, I think it has, you know, but it. I think it makes sense to consider doing all, all three, but uh I think we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. And that's what we do?
In that case, I'll take it as a sense of the board to draft you guys in amended letter that would include all three uh centers. So I will send that back to Rob in the next day or so, so, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. All right, next. Order of business is.
可以考虑通知一个公开会议对一个法条 amendments 但是只是地图的改变
对，所以在这个 在 package 里有所有的需要公开会议通知 planning commission 报告以及地图的改变关于改变在总结中一个 parcel 一个
还有一个 parcel 包括 church street 就这个
对从
这让我有点
对我在想我在想我忘了
对，村庄 residential 到村庄业务这是 common ownership 与其余的道路
对
它已经被 planning commission 授权所以和他们他们的 approval 然后这个会议被合并了所以我们不能在会议中通知因为没有时间但是你会通知评估在下一个会议
所以是
有没有听到关于这个
这是只是一个声明
对，声明
一个公开会议如果有任何问题 Jeff Lynch 是代表小镇我是代表俱乐部
对
没有问题，好的 我一个声明
好的，我会 我会发起一个声明设置公开会议这是
对法条对地图的改变
对
法条有 further discussion
有没有赞成赞成 opposed
什么时候
12月16
好的
12月16 7点
这是我们的下一个会议，对吧
对
对不起，让我们耽误了
没有 没有，听了很有趣 讨论感谢你们我知道这是一份无功之劳
我不会无功之劳
好的，那么
Tatiana 我不知道你
嗨 Tatiana
嗨大家所以我想问一下你知道我知道有很多问题和答案 你知道，但是 这个研究在 2016年关于 rapid land development 你知道在2016年我们有很多库存市场开始在三百到三百五十的价格范围内
是的，我认为最大的事情 我们想要强调的是我不知道我们想要谈太多关于这个需要如果你打开公共电台这就是你要听到的你阅读报纸 housing 是你要听到的而且我认为你可以市场因为它会它将告诉 你知道，我们正在尝试做什么 和它会给出你知道照亮 whether or not 一 financially feasible 二然后然后有意义
我跟了很多镇长在镇上在过去的几天你知道和很多人不知道我跟了很多镇上律师他们不知道 你知道，你说了公众知道 公众不知道
我只是我只是说你正在参与我们尝试谈论需要并且这不是需要的而且这将是很大的我认为
它会很愉快
虽然再次像我从我的角度来看我我们不能坐在岛上 我意思是，这一直在 每天在媒体每个论坛所有
整个 One B
我们的学校我们的学校我们的学校正在发展我们的教师不能找到地方我认为那是就像这是我们
所以教师们应该有更高的薪水以支付四百五十万美元的房子支付三千美元的 mortgage 加上五百美元
对，我不认为 对社区来说只是说可以阻止人们住在社区
不是，我只是说 我们想要确保教师们能够支付他说这意味着他们需要更多一百五十五万美元为了支付
所以
市场研究会谈到
我们对于市场研究 对，市场研究将告诉人们 exactly 什么开发商会提议对然后到那个点
对，他们不会 如果他们不会如果他们得到专业的意见引导他们往一个方向走因为这是市场研究说的
你知道，我们也是 但2016 年市场研究我们没有它不是很准确所以我们需要一些更新的
那正是那正是我们
这是不可能的你知道尤其是现在 Manchester 你知道我读 Manchester 你知道，日报 和 Manchester 是提议不是 Manchester 县实际上州会介入从我的理解你知道他们提议两千单位的 airport road 你知道而且伦敦也会所以我说我们可以我们的 population 很低对吧所以我们会在 Manchester 两或两千单位在住民在这里 你知道，我们不能只是增加人口
所以我们告诉人们想要住在 Dorset 他们必须去 Manchester
不，他们可以去 他们可以去任何地方我只是说
对但是我们 specifically 想要是让人们可以在这里生活这是这是我们要做的目标就是我们如何让我们的教师我们的消防员一个在汽车店工作的工人我们的专业工程师我们如何让他们住在小镇
如果你如果你看我刚从 Vermont Housing Needs Assessment 从 Commerce 和 Community Development 他们他们规定 你知道，他们的 报告从 2025年关于州内的 housing 需求他们有 你知道，很多 specifics 所以你知道 你知道，一个 housing 报告不是关于我们镇的但它但它提供了很好的 context 关于 housing
基本上说我们需要三十万 house housing units 在接下来的五年
statewide
十年
但是我们还需要工作来支持这些三千所以我们有这些工作吗这是问题
我觉得大多数工作在 Manchester 和 Dorset 从45 分钟的地方
不，通常
他们更愿意不
不是，我是雇佣户 我丈夫是雇佣户我们旅行我偶尔开车一个小时然后还要住你知道所以我的丈夫工作在市中心所以他不会在自己的笼子里因为他需要吃饭和找工作这是正常的你知道所以我们都会去某个地方你的妻子在 Burlington 不管她你知道我只是说你知道
对，但是我认为 我们我们已经有很多 Greg Bosch 在上次会议上在工作本地在45 分钟的长途旅行 是的，有时候你需要
你必须步行
但是但是但是有更好的方式这就是我们正在考虑的
而且我们需要更好的工作和更好的
我我不同意这就是我说的如果你说我们有一百个工作他们付了一百万美元以上在区域这些人没有住房然后是的 你知道，但是 但是没有工作
这不是你不能说我们没有工作他们不能有房子那不是
但是我们必须提供工作让人们可以买房你知道
但是我们但是我们你知道 对，他们 他们提到了教育和那 你知道，我们 就像学校 board 我们的学校 board 我知道我们失去了很多人你知道我们想要雇人因为他们无法找到可以在区域提供的住房和 你知道，那只是 那是你知道那那只是 你知道，在一个区域 很重要的 你知道，我心中心 教育但是它正在你知道它发生在很多地方因为 你知道，如果你看 我们的我们的 housing 费用很高我们的费用可能太高对于你知道对于对于 你知道，对于 available 的这里 available 的但是你知道我们得想出一种办法
或者有第二个房地产市场这里推动了大一部分的你知道 appreciate value 所以那不是 你知道，我认为 那些搬到 New Jersey 的人和想要你知道保护或保持相同 你知道， somehow 我们需要让他们与 对，一切都很好 但是还是在挣扎对于对于那些那些全天候工作注册 voters 那些雇主那些 employees
而且这是一个国家的问题说实话
是的
这是
例如假设我是开发商我会说好的我开始第一个阶段对吧我喜欢有很多方式你可以已经提前购买在房子上市之前所以如果我们看到他们有二十个申请已经在那里然后这是这是需求对吧但是如果你没有这些申请如果他们没有付钱那么就没有需求因为
对
我现在告诉你我已经做了很久市场在在 July 改变了我有一个美丽的四百五十万美元的房子在 Morse Hill Road 租房子一千五百平方米的车库一块我放在了市场上我不能在 October 之前卖它没有卖对吧四百五十万美元在看房子一些人来自不同的州是租房子所以他们不喜欢脚步对吧但是四年之后那房子在市场这就是我说的它有供应但是没有需求我们不得不在 April 或 May 或者 whatever 但是没有人来我想它会一天就卖光我想我们可能会有当地需求因为这是 attractive price 完全重新装修的房屋我们没有一个人这就是我说的你知道 是的，我们可以启动这个项目 我们可以我们可以减少
那是房地产的规则
你知道
location
这个是另一个 location Morse Hill Road paved driveway paved 一公里从学校那些教师在哪里需要住房没有人来 你知道，这就是我说的 需求
我觉得三个月三个月的 listing window 不是像 indicative
四个月我意思是没关系当人们想东西时他们看然后就买你知道
对，有很多
如果你在租房 你知道，你就买了 但是问题在于也有很多人在那个区域他们有工作对吧但是 credit score 有时不是很好所以他们不能买任何东西我有比如人们在租房很多他们说我们想买送他们去银行对吧他们出来他们说我们不够准备我们有债务我们有学生债务我们有这个但是这是我的我们可以有供应但是我们可能没有买我们将在 你知道，开发商 和和小镇一起因为 somebody 要看这些房子付税对吧这就是你知道我们需要一点更多更多信息更多数字 exactly 不是像我们 你知道， somewhere 因为他们有 shortage 但他们也有工作但是 Vermont 是一个非常孤立的州我们没有工作你知道这就是我们真的需要所有你有在网站上的数据 你知道，它们必须是 这是 stats 这是我们有 Dorset 有多少工作因为上一次我找到的是只有三个你知道然后从 business to business 人们正在找工作
对，我 通过这个过程 你知道，我的希望是 我们可以我们可以关注什么实际上会发生什么
是的
和你的观点
好的
和不不抓住可能你认为有关但它们并不是
是的像数字就是数字就像人们说的你的市场如何这取决于市场
但是你你你正在使用这个信息来拒绝这个需要
我只是说这是在
我们并不想有这个话题因为我们有 你知道，我们有一个 housing committee 我们我们 你知道，我们有几项 几个 touch points 在 town meeting 它 再次，它被讨论了很多次 你知道，我们不知道 是否成功到底我们只是在在创造出路而且显然有那些认为一切完美就是很好那对他们很好但是 你知道，有很多其他的 因素让我们来到了这里
但是我们如何知道因为市场在变化我们如何知道
所以我们所以我们我们
我们正在做一个新的 market study 和和我认为最重要的你告诉我们对吧我们肯定会考虑到当我们看这个新的 market study 是像一个四百五千美元的价格可能比我们想象的快 renting 是重要的和可能考虑更大的一部分是 units 作为 rental units 所以这是很好的信息但是我想让我们等待新的 market study 出来然后我们一定会再次听你的看看你看到了什么
是的
在那个点
还有一个 Manchester Jamison Lane 对吧一个项目有十二栋房子我想是十到十二栋 idea 是相似的沿着 Main Street 穿过 Vermont Country Store 对吧 none of the units sold 和他们开始在七百降到像五或五点二五一个一千五百平方米的 Bill Drumsberg 说他要买 points 你知道让 rate low 到四所以他们可以有 mortgage 超过三百五十万美元但是那些 units 在市场上大概六个月他们没有
那你知道你你看着它你有点震惊他们可能有 listing prices 到那个程度 你知道，你看着它 它不像七百万美元的 neighborhood
五百五百
现在五百它有点像它不是它不是它它不是它不是吸引和它不太便宜
对
让人们想要
对，所以 我们开始在平均价格对十二
我们不知道
所以你的观点 Tatiana 那我们得回答这个问题
我想我们在在在 presentation 他们他们谈论相对小小工作室我们我们我们 你知道，有人真的想 想买一个小型工作室但是
太小
你知道
你知道我们我们不知道
是的但是这是什么时候我们知道因为一切都是未知的但是我们已经在开发商手中
我们不是
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 开发者所以我们我们我们正在做 market study 他们要做一些评估土地我们都会回到桌子他们会说根据我们看了土地我们看了 market study 这就是我们想做的然后我们都会坐在这里说这很有道理很好或者我们不认为我们认为你需要改变像这个我们认为你需要改变所以那所有的是六个月在 earliest 对于讨论
希望 你知道，我们得高兴 开发者得高兴但是在最后 whoever 你知道，提供贷款 应该是高兴的如果它不是 financially feasible 那它可能不会被资助
是的
我只是想例如开发商可以开始第一步对吧完成然后他们可以继续前进那三十亩土地在谁在他的它会在他的手里对吧
不需要
不需要我们还不知道我们还没有找到
我们有很多项目记得吗是的
对，所以 我们我们提出了很多结论我们还没有获得信息
好的
对
这就是 earlier agreement 是什么来达成协议所以他们可以履行义务找出哪些合理哪些不合理
所以
然后我们可以做出正确的决定现在我们不知道他们他们给我们安排了会议我们不知道 feasible 那个
它只是初步的
那是
我们希望
他们提出了什么我们
我们我们希望他们给我们什么他们认为可以做到的
是的
对
好的
而且我们
但我们不知道我们
我们没有获得信息它是否符合我们的需求或者它是否财务可行
是的
而且我们还要向所有人展示所以小镇知道因为目前为止我跟就像我说的我们跟很多人说话没有人知道
但是 nobody 来到小镇会议
因为因为它也是在 2019年对吧在 COVID 和 everything 都是像你知道 online 和 everything 人们生活在紧张的环境中开始
让我让我问你一个问题你不认为有 housing 问题吗
这取决于我们我们需要租赁你知道但是我们就像我说的当你建造这座镇长会我们可能把四层楼盖起来和这里有 20 个公寓对吧为什么我们没有做
因为它不符合 zoning 法规我肯定
对，我可以 我可以问个问题
我们可能我们不需要有120 个单位的发展我们可以卖掉如果我们谈论租赁那么我们把两栋房子或者
对，你 你基于你觉得市场的预期但我们还没有获得信息你说 是的，20 个单位是合理的这个项目
是的
但我们不知道那会儿这就是我们进入下一个阶段
去做
市场获得信息所以我们可以说 哦，是的 30 个单位是合适的 40 20 我们我们不知道
在
你不能做出你你你继续你你你一直在做出一些结论我们没有获得信息
但是你获得信息你需要提交一个申请确保这些人们可以支付这个
这就是我问的问题因为如果我们去收集数据然后你只是用它来证明你的观点就是你认为不应该发生那很好
我认为这个
我们可以我们可以走这条路但是我真的希望是在作为邻居如果 something 有 meticulate 变得 feasible 开始发生你可以坐在桌子说你知道我喜欢这个 versus 那个
是的
或者如果我们做这个 differently 和这是 unique 通常那不会发生所以
你知道就像我会坐到桌子做出决定因为
是的
每个人就像我 Everyone, it's like, I feel like, you know, we need more data to support this, it's a huge project, it's a town within town, you know? And we need to make sure that the whole town can actually sustain this project. By fire department, policeman, infrastructure, everything else. And if we can, like I said, if this house is gonna sit empty, we're gonna be losing on taxes, right? So all these taxes.
I, we're assuming they're gonna sit up, we don't, you know, all the information you're asking about is what we're about to get.
Once.
Once they get vote, Tatiana.
Yeah.
We don't know yet.
So what's wrong, let's put a pin in it. Let's put a pin temporary, but not like pin that the project is already up here, what we have, it's not.
And as. As we go forward, as we go forward, we're gonna have more public meetings, not select board meetings, that are dedicated to this.
Yeah.
Right, could I ask a question?
Real quick, Michael, we got a lot of other work to do tonight, so.
All right, all right, I'll be, I'll be nice this time. Hey, um, so, I don't know if you, if, I'm sure you guys are in real estate with opportunity zones, are you familiar with opportunity zones? It's a federal opportunity zones?
Yep, the whole southern half of Vermont is an opportunity zone.
Right, so the the it's the federal incentives that you get and it's a, it's it was in low income areas, so there's spots in, um, you can look at the map. Bennington, Rutland, and so that was the first phase of the opportunity zones. The amount of development that's in those areas is absolutely incredible. I mean, if you look at opportunity zones, especially here in in Jersey City. The 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 capital going in because of the the federal tax incentives are, it's unstoppable. So what they did is they extended the opportunity zones so that they're in small towns. So what happened was the federal government goes to each state and they asked them, hey, what are your opportunity zones? It was based on set on a population data. Now with the second round of the opportunity zones, the states are going to be able to designate small towns to get the opportunity zones. And there's add, there's adders on this as well. So what I would say is this, I don't really think Dorset itself will get an opportunity zone, maybe Manchester will. Um, it's it's supposed to, it's for smaller downtowns, but if we sign this agreement and then. This we get, if it's an opportunity zone in that area, that developer is gonna get a windfall. Because everything that you hold in an opportunity zone is tax-free after a certain amount of time. So, um, you know, I'm just, you know. That's where I would be investing, I'd be looking in opportunity zones because of those federal incentives, we don't have it in Dorset. I don't think it's gonna happen, but that's where the money is going and that's where you're really moving the needle on building housing. Thousands of units, I mean, you would not believe the amount of development that goes on because of these, in these zones. We're not an opportunity zone. So I I just wanted to bring, bring that up, because that's where the, that's, that really is what directs the dollar.
So, uh, Michael, thank you for that info, we'll definitely look into it, just one point of clarification too, that we're. One of the things that's unique about our effort is that we're not looking into the traditionally federally subsidized low income demographic. Um, we're, we're, we're focusing on what's called a more of the missing middle, which is it's higher than that, that federal benchmark. Um, and there's typically not much uh in the way of resources for it, um. And this is what the the examples that the board was talking about earlier, the teachers and nurses.
Yeah, now this is for opportunity zones, you, we're building towers here and they're collecting six, eight thousand dollars a month. There's no, it's not a, it's not a low income thing. It's about development in 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 areas. And that, that's, um, that's where all the, that's where all the development's happening. It it's not low income.
Okay.
So look, look, check it out, I mean, it's opportunity zones, you, I've gone everywhere, I've gone down in Bennington, I was just up in Rutland looking. There's no way I'd touch, I'd live in that place, it's a disaster, but, um.
Did that? Well, don't compare us to Ron, right? Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a, a need to stop it. We, we all live in.
I don't know, take a look.
Oh, it is, you're, I mean, you're you're used to a certain lifestyle and you're saying, that's not.
Hey, I I I moved to Hoboken because I couldn't afford it. You you move places where, uh, cause you can't afford things, I went to live in Manhattan, I couldn't do it. I had a four hundred dollar apartment.
Michael, we're, we're, like, our school, our, our, here locally, our school is, is like looking at closure and we're struggling to hire. You know, baseline vital community members that make a community tick. And that's, that's the reason that we're, you know, focused on this, it's not, um, maybe we're, we're.
It's not for now.
We're not able to get the people we need in the community, um, to help the community function.
And and to make it so people wanna have homes or second homes here.
I think it's. All right, we're gonna cut this off.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Michael, and, uh.
Okay, goodbye.
Tatiana.
Budget time.
I will just say it too, this is good, the board let, let this discussion keep going and in most other communities.
I appreciate that.
It wouldn't have happened, so kudos to the board for, um, keeping the discussion going.
The idea is ideal, right? However, it may not be, like I said, after the study, you must see it, because it may not be affordable. Because if the people make fifty, sixty thousand, how they gonna afford the mortgage of three thousand, even at the minute?
We don't, we don't.
We'll find that out, Tatiana.
Yes.
We'll cover it.
We, we do not know.
We'll find that out.
Not enough.
But you keep saying the same thing over and over, you just don't know yet.
But this is, we have.
I, we hear you.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll.
We understand, sorry.
I'm gonna, let's stay in touch, you know?
We will.
And like, keep everybody posted, you know?
Yeah.
And how about the vote? Can we actually come community to vote? What is the situation?
We reached that question, we don't know, we, we don't know yet.
There's nothing of a lot, yeah. When we have something of a lot.
But what is the town bylaws on the vote?
Were you voting on the, Tatiana, allowing more people to live here?
But.
But that's, that's a pretty tough thing.
But could, no, but in in general, like the, like if people would like to vote, do they have an opportunity to vote? I'm just asking.
Yeah, that, that's a question that we're gonna have to answer for sure, we don't have the answer yet. We don't know.
But this is town by law has an answer on the vote?
It's, we don't know.
We, we don't have.
Well, we don't have, yeah.
We don't have town bylaws?
It's not, it's not, it it was not.
But we may have to, we may have to think about, I mean, you you go to the town website and there's the Raptor Lane Housing RFQ. And then the feasibility side, but maybe we need to be actually providing more information here and just to ensure that people.
There's not enough information.
Have a way to stay up on what's, on what's happening.
Yeah.
Because people needs to know, needs to be aware, right, and vote, if people vote yes, great, if people vote for something else, great, maybe they have another ideas, maybe.
But they.
Yeah, the, the truth is, it's really, really hard, you know, it's okay, being on this, again, the school boards. You know, we, we just, you know, voted recently to close two of our schools in next, next school year. We had been having public session, we've been discussing this for over three years. We'd have been having, you know, public sessions, you know, really open sessions on, on that for like fifteen months. And we still had, you know, so many people came in at the end and said, wait, where did this come from? It's, you know, we, we had tons of sessions, a lot of, you know, putting a lot of materials out there. But, you know, what what we need is people like you and other people just, you know, passing the word around, okay, here's, here's what's going on. And keep an open mind to it, but you know, it's, it's, it, you know, what, what honestly, you know, I. I just heard for so many years that, you know, you guys are always doing everything in secret and it's like, we're really not trying to do things in secret, we're trying to be. Trying to be very transparent about it, but it's hard to get people's attention. You know, cause they, you get stuff in front of them, but they're not really gonna pay attention until they get a point where, oh my gosh, what's happening? And we need, we need to get more people involved.
Maybe with the.
And not only that, Tatiana, but I think there's gonna be another year, a year and a half more of all this happening. So many more opportunities for you to speak before it's a final deal.
Not according to this website. Because it said at the end of tw- two thousand twenty-six, they would like to break the ground, it's on Raptor Lane, um, website.
We'd like to.
We'd like to, but I don't think that's happening, I just say a year, two year and a half.
Yeah.
Like to.
The year or like.
Yeah. But the answer is fantastic.
The hope is to be looking at construction in two thousand twenty-eight or two thousand twenty-nine is what it says.
Yeah, but like also like right now, the.
It's the first couple of steps.
Take like three, one, two, three, four, twenty-six.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
But in general, also like all these meetings, like, you know, half of our population are in Florida right now, right?
Read the code. Yeah. But they don't vote.
That's their choice. Okay, do you wanna stay for the budget?
Yeah, we.
I can take for the budget.
Wanna stay for the budget discussion?
It's fine, no problem.
We're getting into it.
Let's get the budget ready.
Well.
Okay.
If we can stop this, say, quote right here, we can have a budget.
It includes some money.
Anyway, have fun, thanks for listening, you know?
Yep.
All right, uh, we've got, it's. As part of our, uh, budget process, the first step is to look at capital projects that we're considering for fiscal year twenty-seven, so have at it, Rob.
Yeah. So if you remember, November is just like really early, um, draft budget territory, so don't, um, I I think what I'm looking for is just some, you know. Whether or not you think I missed the mark, or whether or not it's, there's some thinking about, um, the overall, um. Budget increase from year to year and then what kind of informs that or s- specific, um, projects indoor, um, item. So the, the first thing to talk about is the capital projects list for twenty, FY twenty-seven. Um, the, if you remember last summer, we got a grant, uh, we ended up not doing the bridge work yet, um. Which is a good thing, uh, gives us a little more time to get our, um, ducks in a row, to get it, to get it done, to get it funded, um. So, uh, within the budget, there's an allocation for matching that grant, um. Paving, what we've lined up is, is paving right to the town office here, maybe a little bit beyond the town office, but. Raptor Lane and then the upper part of Dambie Mountain Road.
Is that the part that's already paved or is it gonna bring it down a little bit?
Um. Yeah. It's already paved. Dambie Mountain?
Yeah.
It would just be resurfacesing the existing middle section, yeah. Um, and the total cost for that's about a hundred and twenty thousand. We did look at, um, we've talked about a couple times and we, we had this dis- discussion with, um, Long Trail School. If you recall, um, they've actually gotten, um, some budget numbers like a year or two ago about, um, them funding some of the paving. To continue from, um, where we stopped up to the school, um, that didn't kind of shake out, um. What we looked at was potentially paving that kind of hole. Uh, section and side sections, because it just, you, you can't end up with two hundred feet of dirt, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Um, cost for that's about two-ten and I, you know, I've basically said, let's push that discussion for, for next year or beyond. Um, but I can, you know, we can change it if the board wants to change it. Um, is there some money in here for traffic home design for Route Seven? Um, if you remember, we picked, uh, an option to kind of run by V-Trans, we're still waiting on a cost estimate. And then, um, some feedback from V-Trans, but I, I've included some money in here to just, it would at least get some of the design going. Um, uh, depending on what V-Trans comes back with, uh, Demming Pond. This is, um, the South Village Pond, which is in East Dorset, the bottom of Morse Hill Road, uh, the neighbors, uh, that surround the pond. Have done substantial, um. Can't call it dredging anymore, you call it capacity restoration. Um, they've done a lot of work, um, and they funded it all themselves, they actually got a permit for it. Um, and now they've, they've kind of come to us because they've, they've kind of, um, run a ground where they don't have, um. You know, any more, uh, uh, funding available and also the, the last location to potentially, um. Rem- remove material from is actually right next to Morse Hill Road and it's at the, um, outflow of one of our culverts. So we have, we're trying to kind of to tie two things together and potentially get a quote from, um, Daniel's Construction, who's gonna be doing the bridge work. Um, and they also did the work in, uh, on the Baton Kill, uh, a couple years ago. The, um, the, uh, in-stream work where we restored capacity there. Uh, we'd look to try to get them to give us a price for doing that work there, so I've, I've included a budget number for that, um.
Rob, where's Bridge Twenty-Seven?
Lower Hollow Road.
Okay, that one.
Yeah. And it, and it's the, um, first one you come to, um, so it's, it's near, um.
Just before the Addington House.
Pretty quick.
Yeah, let's stay inside this, yeah, yeah, just before, yes, yes.
Right, just sounds.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the, like, the twelve hundred something, um, area.
Just one. Yeah. One quickie in the, you know, you brought up Demming and Prentice Pond, which was an additional twenty and fifteen. Which I, I saw the twenty in the, in the numbers back there, but I didn't see the fifteen at it.
Um, that's.
In the budget, but draft.
That I think is in highway, um, engineering. Like within the.
Well, engineering just went from ten to fifteen and starting with miscellaneous went twelve, twelve to thirty-five. So just a, just in case it.
I'll double check, thank you, Jim.
Yeah. But that's, uh. I mean, we're. You know, stuff like Prentice Pond here, you know, we're still like delaying forever. Very expensive.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, we still, we still don't have, um. Um, we still don't have a directive from the state relative to Prentice Pond yet. Um, but it's a placeholder to do a little bit more, um, kind of starting of some design. Um, design probably isn't even the right word, like preliminary, um, maybe some survey work and some, um. Building upon, they, in the, in the study itself, they recommended a couple of options. Um, my hope would be to potentially pick one of them and have them kind of run down some scenarios and some cost estimates. To, to get more detailed, because we don't, they did, in, in, in the big study, they did some kind of, they did like a humongous range of what it might cost. Um, and it's not, it's kind of scary when you just look at that.
That's always.
What I'm trying to figure, it, it.
Yeah.
Can we drill down and get a little bit more?
I was thinking with some stuff like that, you know, should we be building a sinking fund or something like that, you know, building up a.
Um, something like that is probably gonna be a bond type thing.
For. It's gotta be a bond.
Okay. Yeah, because you're, you're gonna be, um. The hope is that that's gonna be done in concert, probably with the water line that goes through there and probably most of Church Street. And it all is one big bonded project and that people thirty years from now will be paying for it and not us.
Yeah.
Um, and it's gonna be in that, it's gonna be millions of dollars, you know, in the scope of like that whole.
Right. That's the scary thing.
Yeah.
We don't have time to build up a sinking fund.
Yeah, no, so you can't, and what, and again, it's, it's because it's that scope and size. It's, and it's a, you know, the, the, the dam, the road and the water, uh, the water infrastructure, those are all long-term. Right, they're, they're hundred-year assets.
Right.
So it, it makes sense to, to pay for it through a bond, um, so that it's, it, the load is spread out, yeah.
Yep, makes sense. Thanks.
Um, so again, I, I'm trying to like put some money in there so we can kind of do a little bit of work and get a little more clarity around. What the liability is and then maybe what some of the opportunities are, um. You know, one of the unique things with the, um, water system is that it's. If there's a way to piggyback on other projects, it makes the water work cheaper, which is good for the water users, because there's only a couple hundred of them. Um, and, you know, it's, um, as much as we can bring in other components of the project to help, um, fund it. Um, then it, it makes the water money go further.
Yeah.
So, um. And there could be, you could be right, Jim, that it just, it's a, we just.
No, I, I.
Punt, we punt for a long time until the state forces us not to.
I, I think you're right, it's, it's. We're not gonna be able to build up enough funds.
Um, yeah, so o- other stuff, uh, sidewalks, equipment fund stuff. And then, uh, we are a little bit, same kind of discussion, but related to, um, uh, the red shed, which is in the East Dorset Highway Garage Campus. It's just a cold storage shed and it's, it's the original building to that, um, property and it's just, like, we've, there's only so much, like. Um, siding repair you can do before the whole thing's ready and it just fall in, so we're trying to look at.
Is it needed?
Is it needed?
Yeah.
Uh, the grader stored there, um, there's a bunch of equipment stored there, yeah, so, and we need it, um. And the hope is to, is to come up with some cost efficient kind of steel. You know, slab and steel structure building that's reasonably inexpensive.
Okay, are there any of these, uh, capital projects that we wanna eliminate?
And you don't have to make the decision now, but that's the, you know.
No, it makes sense to me. Yeah, okay, then let's move on to the, um, the budget itself, um, seven percent increase in.
On the expense side, yeah.
On the expense side is, uh, ex- anticipated?
Biggest thing, yeah, every, all the stuff we just talked about, um, three percent COLA for employees. No change to the healthcare split, um, healthcare is increasing about thirteen percent, um, which is a lot.
Honestly, it's honestly not bad compared to what's out there in the market right now.
Yeah.
It's most, so, like, I run this for my company and I, like, most initial quotes are twenty to thirty percent higher than prior year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Your lack of age, it's.
So getting down to twelve is pretty good.
It's been all over the place, the teachers ended up at a seven percent increase, but. The retired teachers, they ended up having to change programs since they got a bit, they got the first pricing. The retired teachers, they ended up having to change programs since they got a bit, they got the first pricing was a fifty percent increase.
Right, yes.
But they had to move fifty.
You know.
Fifty.
Yeah, some of the.
Yeah, move to somebody else.
One of the things that depressurizes the whole thing is that we do have a handful of staff that are on um basically. Uh Medicare and then Medicare gap plans and the gap plans are are substantially cheaper than.
Yeah.
Um than the the regular premium plan through the through the exchange. And even um even with covering the employee and the spouse um individually and with two different plans, it's still cheaper. So we're we're kind of benefiting from an aging workforce a little bit. Um what else can we talk about? The uh assessing contract, that's um in there under the assessing department, that's about, that's twenty twenty or twenty two thousand. Um and that's, you get to the point where um the grand list. Uh as a as a database, as a spreadsheet, as a um statistically sound um entity. Um needs to be uh maintained by the by whom that built it. Um and that's that's what that N M C contract does, so it is.
So this will be rather than, rather than taking it out of the reappraisal fund and uh we're 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 basically expensing this now.
Yeah, and then and it that's more or less like an annual thing where they're gonna come in and help put the grand list together. They're gonna come in and help with inspections on some of the the big houses so that we can get um, you know, big houses, little houses, all houses.
We can continue to build up the reappraisal fund.
Yeah, so that gets that gets built up with um money that comes from the state. Um so this the state, um a portion of the property transfer tax comes to the towns to help fund kind of reappraisals. Uh it is important though because the state is, this will be year two, last year they were talking about shifting the whole. The whole program a- and requiring reappraisals like every six years. Um problem is, it's not and there's literally nobody to do it every six years, it's it's physically impossible.
Right, right. Yeah.
Not possible, cuz there's two or three vendors that actually do most of the outside um uh reappraisal work. Uh the state certainly do- doesn't have the ability, um so there, but either way, there's still um and then in other areas, it's it is common practice to do it more often. Um so that's, you know, so that having N M C there is is gonna be important. Um the sheriff contract is increased again, um I think that that's just, you know. Then when we first got in with the sheriffs, the I would say the hourly rate was really low. Um probably um so low that uh that they were trying to earn the business, try to to try to get the account. Um and now, you know, obviously it's a different sheriff too, so it's not um, you know. It's I think up to below eighties an hour, which is not unreasonable at all when you get into. What does it cost to outfit and insure and provide a a law enforcement officer?
Every member is seventy five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so it's um.
That long ago.
Yeah, yep, so and that's, you know, and that's sticking with the same level of of um.
Coverage.
Coverage, so that's that's assuming that, you know, that is one tool in the toolbox would be to ratchet down the coverage, um. I I I don't have a reason to suggest that, um but it is something you could look at if you wanted to. Uh we're probably the biggest outside um law enforcement contract for the for the sheriffs is related to community uh law enforcement. Um yeah, and then. Kind of at the end of the day, like I said, it's about a seven percent spending increase. Um and I try to be conservative on the tax rate projection stuff, you know, it's it's likely that the grand list is gonna go up. Um a decent amount again, nothing in the way of obviously the reappraisal, but it uh it'll go up again next year, which will drive the rate down. And I'm kind of conservatively saying it'd be, it would be about a six point five percent increase. Um now, embedded in all this are certain assumptions and that, you know, I think the best way to do it is to. What do you think and should we sharpen the pencil, should we, are there things that we need to look at, um and I can go back and do that.
Well, just looking at it, I you know, I get just my quick take on it is really the capital projects and the healthcare costs are the only things that are driving the increase.
We're sh- we're very small, so it's not a lot of.
It's not a lot of dollars.
There's not a lot of.
Everything everything else is just kind of growing, growing normally and.
Just normal, year over year.
Cuz you know, you gotta, you know, for that increase, you're talking about, you know, two hundred and twenty five thousand increase and and we're talking about, you know. Thirty five for a bridge and twenty for in fifteen and healthcare.
That's not gonna change.
Healthcare, like, you know, twenty five for the sheds and that.
Yeah.
Healthcare is up, you know, it's it's it just. So healthcare alone is thirty five ish, you know, it's like.
When do we need to have a public hearing?
Not till January.
January.
Well, well, this'll get fine tuned, like there's there's things that we're still waiting on, like the.
Cause the only things that are gonna really significantly change is if we drop some projects or something, right?
Yeah.
Drop out.
Yep, uh defer defer maintenance, that would be. Which is not.
More as cool as a battery.
Dog crap, dog crap, yeah.
It's in there, well, it's in there, you know, the stuff is in there, I don't think that there's a lot of fluff. Um it's trying to be the basic needs of what I think we need, um you know, we probably could bag the the money for the Red Shed if it really came down to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh we probably could maybe cut back a little bit on the paving, or not not the paving, the equipment.
But the the Red Shed is the perfect one that is deferred maintenance because you're gonna have to.
Yeah.
List it, aren't they?
We need the building.
So it's, you know, and you're not, you're not looking at spending the money, you're gonna essentially.
Save.
Setting aside the money to, it's really a.
Correct. Yeah, we already have, we have a small, I think we've got ten or ten or twelve thousand in a in a sinking fund already. So this, the twenty five, we get added to that, my hope is that in a couple of years, we have.
If we do that every year, then we don't have, that'd be a huge, huge hit once in a while here.
Correct.
Yeah. You're not gonna bond a the Red Shed.
Honestly, like looking at this.
I'm hoping not to, we're hoping to try to get a pre- basically a prefabricated.
Yeah.
Structure that's just easy, that might be hopefully, you know, more than a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand almost. I mean, that's, uh but we haven't, you know, gone down that road yet, but again, it could get pulled back. Um the equipment stuff, that line, I could look at that a little harder, I think that we're still um. There's a couple of things, so the paving thing, we're still, we're still um don't have this year's bill for paving yet, so that's gonna come through. I've got estimates, but like that's gonna come through and then we've got a truck on the equipment side that we. Ordered two years ago, it's in Williston, getting a body put on it and I hopefully will have it by Christmas, but I don't have a bill for that yet either. And it's the same kind of thing where we had an estimate, it's gonna be, I think, right there, but until that comes through, um once I get a little more clarity on that, then. There's a chance that the equipment, you know, fun sinking um fun line item could go down a little bit, cuz we're in a. As far as the equipment is concerned, we're in a really good spot.
I think also like, you know, the property on in the hollow, you know, if we, you know, sale of that would be a good thing going into, you know, the Red Shed fund into the. Whatever, uh would be, we have a few assets that we could actually realize in that. That would be nice putting them in sinking fund for, we know we're gonna get out some things down the road.
Yep, yeah, there's always me.
I don't think anything on this capital projects list could be or should be taken off, the only, the only one that I even consider is like. Do we really need to pay Dambie Mountain Road this year and do we really need to get paving to this building? Or is that something that could be deferred, but the rest of it, I just think you're causing problems, right?
I think the town hollow would be really nice.
It would be nice, but is it a nice to have?
Right.
You know, yes, you don't have to.
Because if if you talk to, you know, talk to people about who are already angry about their reappraisals, right?
Oh, there was just a light there.
And then you're like, oh.
I totally got their tax bills.
Yeah, well, maybe, right, but then you're talking about six and a half percent increase.
Almost.
Right.
On and and I think, you know, it's like the COLA, people would expect that we, they don't expect six and a half, they expect three.
Reflectors. Well, we have a really stringent zoning law and rights.
But I don't think the support's gonna be out of these other little things.
If you take off a fifteen thousand.
I think what was going heroes, the.
Yeah, no, I think the the only one that you can talk about is the paving, I I.
Was that giving a great hit?
We need a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't think.
A reflector, so.
And the paving plan, and honestly, the paving plan has been, you know, it's it's like, I've always been kind of amazed at the paving plans, but uh.
Yeah, that's weird.
You know, it's it's planned out for the next twenty years or whatever.
Yeah, it's a little, I didn't include the spreadsheet yet, I'll do the, I'll have that for the next meeting, but yeah, I mean, you'll be able to see what it.
But it's those, I I never had an appreciation of how, oh yeah, the.
You have to think that through.
You know, it's like, okay, the thing.
Well, if the spreadsheet.
We're doing this this year and then we're gonna go to, you know.
Because I can do this next year and you see that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what's nice about the spreadsheet is that if you if you kick the can, you see all the other stuff that gets piled up behind it and you go, oh boy.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
Um and that's, and and when you do that, you can, I mean, it's you you can just fill in the cells and and the thing will calculate when you defer something or or. Lower the contribution down, you'll look at ten years and it'll cost you a quarter million dollars.
Right. It's not gonna be cheaper in ten years, no, no.
No, 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 I'm, so the, yeah, I mean, the price of paving has doubled since I started, yeah, so.
Is that right? Okay.
Just like everything else.
So we'll be trying to finalize the budget next meeting?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the budget?
That looks like a good job.
Yeah.
Right, why don't we move on then to uh whole business?
Okay, she got some?
No. No, I'm just talking out.
I'm just gonna try to hit the highlights, the East Dorset Green, the Old Town Office demolition's supposed to start um December first. Um we expect the work to take about a week, it's been delayed because there's been two rounds of um. There's the asbestos tiles that had to get taken out of the front of the building and then there was um vermiculite in the walls, which is required to be treated as asbestos. Um and that's adding um. The asbestos removal parts of it have added twenty, around twenty five thousand to the to the demo costs and they're not, as far as I can tell, it's not negotiable, so it's. Um there's, yeah, we're just kind of going through, going through the steps, so it's taking a little bit longer, but we're hopefully gonna be um. You know, getting the site reclaimed and in a pretty good s- um state by the first, end of the first week in December. Um next, two things, uh one is the Route uh Route Thirty speeding, so if you remember, we. Um we have a sign, we've, we wanna put signs in a couple of different spots on Route Thirty, kind of north and south, um. We've been kind of um, the 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 sign is by a Barrow's House, even though it's been there for a really long time, is is actually rogue. It's not really supposed to be there like that, it doesn't, it doesn't meet all the state's rules. Uh when we go to get the permit to put the permanent ones in there, uh it does have to meet the rules, the this the speed study is a requirement of that, so.
Seeing them popping around up around a lot of places in other towns.
Well, they're fairly, uh they're much cheaper than a police officer, um and they work pretty good. Um and 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 they, um it is a fascinating case study in uh tort liability because the the reason that we aren't supposed to use.
They do seem to work well.
Um the message, the one that has different colors and can talk to you and all that stuff is, it doesn't meet the um M U T C D, which is the manif-. Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, right now.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Uh and state is like, they don't bend on it at all, um but the things are everywhere.
Yeah.
But they're all, if you look, they're really all on like town roads, not state roads, um but they are everywhere, so and it's.
Right.
And it tells you not to, a lot of places.
Well, at what point, when they're proliferated and everywhere, at what point does the liability change because the exposure is just not there?
Yeah.
So the reason that, you know, you can't use those units on the state roads, they're saying they're exposed to liability, but. Yeah, I'm saying that, I'm saying V Trans needs to go back to the drawing board and like change a lot of the rules, but it is with us.
I'm shocked at the eighty one miles an hour.
That's insane.
That.
I can't even imagine.
Um, yeah, that is crazy.
It's wild.
And wasn't it eighty one on both of them?
Yeah, they're eighty one and eighty or something, yeah, probably, yeah.
Eighty and eighty one, I think, yeah.
Right, the same guy.
Right, it's gotta be the same guy.
That's a singular event, so I think the the thing to focus on is the um, the average speed um by Paul's Way was forty three and a forty.
Yeah.
And then the average speed by um Dorset West and Route Thirty was forty five, forty.
Eighty.
Um both, both yes or speeding, but um now you have some concrete data when people saying, you know, the average car is going sixty, you can go, no, it's not.
Ooh, not that, let's add, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not. Um so I think, it does, um this, the info's been forwarded to to the sheriff to, because when you look at it, it says enforcement rating high, I mean, that.
It feels like it when you.
It does mean that the, you know, um if you wanted to get speed speeding tickets for going three miles an hour over the over the limit, um.
Nope.
You have a good chance of doing that.
Oh, thank you.
Um so this will inform the 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 signs. The last thing to talk about is the the Board of Civil Authorities, so there's a court date for um a B C A appeal. Um my understanding at this point is it now becomes kind of the select words um uh decision. And so now we've, we've been instructed instructed to obtain outside counsel, which we're trying to do. Um and what's different about this B C A appeal normally goes to the state appraiser and there's kind of like a. An entity at the state that does the review, um this is actually going to the Superior Court. Um so it's a different um longer, I think maybe more expensive um process.
And that's the appellate's choice.
That's the appellate's choice, correct, so our our regular attorney, um. Uh uh Jim Barlow has has basically said you have a couple of options, you can, you know, um get representation, probably. Um hire your own appraisal firm to substantiate the B C A's decision. You know, or you can negotiate with the appellate and just settle, depending on how you, or you wanna do it, I I think that there's um. It's only one, so we very fortunate that out of, you know, fifteen hundred parcels.
Yeah.
Um and how many B C As, thirty eight?
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven B C A appeals, but there was one appellate, that's, it's really a pretty amazing um credit to kind of the whole process. Um so it's really the board's decision as to how you kind of move forward from there, I think.
Oh, that's a pretty big gap.
I think that there's a big, yeah, I think the general, the general, my general understanding is there's a big gap in the pending of values. Um and there's only.
Because they they came up with a, they came in with a, a, an F, you know, a an appraisal that was, that was one of the sort of obvious appraisal. And one of the flyby proposal or appraisals.
Yeah, and I think there's been a sale on the neighborhood that kind of further substantiates probably the town's value on it, I think, there's.
So you're saying that the appraiser told her, the appellate, what she wanted to hear?
Yeah, I mean, they, it was included with the package, I guess, I recall it.
Yes.
What a surprise, what a surprise, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
But also I think it was one of those, you know, just drove me nuts to seeing, you know, we had a bunch of appraisal, appraisals from like the same appraisal outfit. Who, you know, clerk had had not visited the property.
Oh my god.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So how far apart is the value? Like, is it worth it?
Two million or a million and a half.
That's that's the spread?
Okay, the spread is like a million and a half.
So what is this gonna cost us?
Um I don't know yet, I mean, it's, so it's um the first, the first step is that we'll go to um Superior Court and then the judge will set a timeframe and a timeline. Uh for discovery and then kind of the process, so it's like, it's likely to be a couple of months from December that. The discovery stuff would be due and that process would start, um I would think low thousands?
Do we think Claris? And you'd likely have to us.
Low thousand, two to three.
Yeah.
Or one to five, or three to five?
Um.
A reasonable settlement?
Maybe low to mid.
Thousands.
Okay, so what is that one and a half?
Oh, so we.
Worth to us over a five year period?
In tax revenue, like what's the ROI on fighting?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, oh. Uh three million dollars is twelve to fifteen thousand dollars here.
So.
Oh.
So it's within a year, we have ROI.
In a year, it would make it sound, yeah.
So, yeah.
If we got that number.
But it's the old of, if.
There's some symbology to it.
If we came down by, you know, that's that's when you get to the old, if we came down by two fifty or five hundred, then would that settle?
Would, would that be enough, yeah?
Well, during the process, I don't think anything's precluded from, you know, uh keeping that conversation going.
We keep. Yeah.
With the appellate, I don't, I don't think, I think that, my general understanding is it could be settled at any time.
Just like on TV.
So you could say, is there, is there a number?
Any anytime that two parties agree to something, yeah.
You know, we think we're right, but you you know, to avoid everybody's.
To avoid the heavy.
Yep. Okay.
And if the number is too ridiculous, then you say.
Then you keep going.
Court. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so we already have a a at at least a court date of uh December twenty second and I think I'm close to retaining an attorney, but it's kind of like calling a plumber. Well, yeah, so we already have a, a, at least a court date of December twenty-second, and I think I'm close to retaining an attorney, but it's kind of like calling a plumber. It's not as easy as you think.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so that's just an update, so I think you'll, there'll be more to hear about this for sure the next couple of years.
But I think our attitude is fight on.
Yeah, I think so, in unless, unless like Jim said, if if coming down by ten percent of that spread will settle the whole thing, then.
And to be done with.
But that, that would be the, you know, is.
And we'd save that and lawyer costs anyway.
You know, we think we're right, but you know, is is there, you know, is there a number that just, you know, that you think, you know, I can, I'm.
Yeah.
Realizing that we think we're in the right here.
Yeah.
Is there something we could? You know, we could.
That's gonna sound like just a big. Yeah, so I'll, what I'll do is I'll come back at the next meeting with a, I'll have some accounting to it.
Yep.
To inform your decisions.
Okay. All right, um. Now, so we've covered the whole business?
Yep.
Uh, financial report?
Um, year-over-year delinquent taxes are pretty much in line, um. Uh, and, let's see, fiscal twenty-six, um, we're able to reduce the line of credit associated with the project. Um, down and um, we've got a couple, we've got money coming and going, so eventually we'll be able to, um. Fully uh build back that line of credit and probably won't need it, um, after that, uh, what else? And then as far as the fiscal year, we sit kind of right at the benchmark, about halfway through the year almost and about halfway, um, expended. And I think that the White and Burke number, um, has been updated. That relative to the ARPA, uh, items. And then the VHP studies were supposed to, supposed to be coming soon, I think.
So there's a sinking fund for the demolition of the Old Town Office?
Um, one seventy-five, or is that, yes, yep, that's the, that's the demo and, um.
That's an ARPA.
But then it's also the building and.
And building construction is right, okay.
Park, okay. Okay. Yep, so it's, I, and I'm saying that out of the one seventy-five, I'm hoping it's gonna be about ninety for the demo, yeah.
Right. For the demo?
Um, like, we're gonna, we're definitely gonna do some of the stuff ourself a little bit, like some of the, um. Maybe topsoil-ing and reclaiming in the spring and seeding and mulching, both we may do ourselves, um, but yeah, but it still leaves, it still leaves a good amount. Um, for that project advancement for the property.
Yep.
That's it.
All right, uh, motion please to accept the findings report as presented, so we.
Seconded.
Any discussion, I listen to people say hi.
Hi.
Both. Okay. It's like the town hall's report.
Yep. Around, um. Um, winter is, seems like it's here, I talked about the new truck coming, um, it is a, what's the one, one nuance with the truck is that, uh. Oh, we're talking about retaining, um, the truck, um, that it's replacing and kind of shifting some stuff around, um. Which may factor into that, uh, equipment on discussion at the next meeting. Uh, the fire district, um, Casella pulled into town, I think tomorrow, or they pull into town tomorrow and they're gonna start working on Thursday. Lucky us. Um, they're gonna start at the southern end of the system, so this is by H N Williams, um, they're gonna be doing stuff, uh, in the right away of Route Thirty. For a couple of weeks, and this is, they're replacing service lines from the main to the curb stop. And it's, yeah, they'll be doing that for, um, till December first in the right away, and then after that, uh, until weather stops and. They'll be doing, they'll be going from the curb to the house and then they'll pick it up again in the spring. Um, and let's see, uh, well, number three, so there, there's some updates here, um, that, you know, that. I guess owed to deferred maintenance, um, the water system is just a perfect example of, um, you know, it's. It's been almost about ten years, I think, like eight years when it's been.
Eight years, since the new board takeover?
Yeah, right, eight, eight or nine years.
Yeah. Yep.
I think it's done a, I mean, a ton of, a ton of stuff, but when you defer something for forty years, it just doesn't, you can't crawl out of that hole quickly.
You could say a hundred years, right, defer.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's some new stuff that went in the like fifties, sixties.
There was since it built.
But then, yeah, so the newest stuff is is in the sixties, um, but the majority of the stuff is a hundred years old. Um, so there, so well, number three is gonna need treat, likely need treatment, it right, it meets all the, um, the state criteria at this point. Um, and there's kind of, you know, the the, the prudential committee's got a couple of plates, like two or three plates going at the same time. And it's just, it's a tough, exhausting thing. Um, and the consulting engineers are basically saying that the springs, um, themselves. Don't, already don't, on paper, according to the state's rules, the springs themselves don't provide enough source to meet. Needs of the system right now, which me, which means on paper, um, they need another source. Um, and and the struggle is that they've made a lot of headway with with, um, the distribution system and the, and the system is much tighter. So we're seeing a lot less water get used, um, and there's a thought, well, if we just keep doing that, then eventually we're gonna have enough water. Functionally, we do, we've got plenty of water, right, we just went through a, a really dry summer and the springs were, were fine and the system's tighter and, um. But kind of long story short, the, the state's rules and then also just kind of from a, you know, practical standpoint. Everything's pointing to having another source, um, and they've got well three, pretty, and they're gonna have a permit for it, so. Um, the draft permit is, you know, is kind of in the queue, um, and then there's some discussion about. Into potential treatment and the treatment costs and that's really kind of what, you know, what, um, where the rubber meets the road, but. In theory, um, on paper, they need, no matter what they do, they're gonna need more water, so it's, it's tough, um. And it's not, um, the treatment costs are five to six hundred thousand dollars, I think. Above and beyond just building the, the, um, homehouse and all that stuff.
With that's five years of clever dozen extra.
Extra. So it's about a million six to do the.
That's upfront, upfront.
So they, yeah, so they've got the well to the point where it's.
And then there's an annual.
It's, it, so the, right now they have a well casing in the ground and they've got pipe to the street, um, the pipe and the well casing aren't connected. They've got to connect it, build a, a treatment facility and the facility itself has to have some, some specific treatment items in there and that's the. You know, the, the extra costs, it's about a million to do, um, the building and everything else just to get it online and functional and that's about. Six hundred for the, for the treatment, which is extra, uh, but it's a. There's like no other options. And they've already, um, there's already been about four hundred thousand dollars invested in the, in the well and the pipe to the street, um, so they've come a long ways.
But there has to been to pull the trigger.
So, yeah, of this, I mean, six hundred thousand dollars.
A lot of money.
Um, and they're, and, um, you know, they're still rounding out this, this distribution project with Casella.
So would we be able, if we got hooked up? Are we pretty sure that that would remove the moratorium?
That it would, hundred percent it would, yeah, but what?
Hundred percent.
Well, three would, would.
Okay.
Well, three would double the capacity of the system.
But so it's gonna benefit the town, but not necessarily benefit the water district?
Um. A little bit, I mean, both, right, I mean, the water fees become cheaper if more people can use the water.
I mean, there's no. Right, but. So I'm just thinking, is there any way the town could, since the town's gonna benefit more, I would think.
Oh, on the funding side you're talking? Um, it's a good question, uh, typically that stuff's all enterprise where you, where it is supposed to be self-sustaining when people use it, pay for it, um. Usually the discussions around that stuff are related to fire protection, um, where, when you, like, if they were upsizing the mains or something like that. And then there was a direct benefit to people that even weren't on the system, that the hydrant could now get used near their house, then there's a pretty straight line. Uh, but I don't have a, you know, other than that, I don't, I'm not aware of much commingling of the, of the town stuff. Um, with utility stuff, usually they're compartmentalized, other than kind of like, like the apprentice pond project example that I gave you. Where we're both kind of doing a project at the same time, uh, but that doesn't mean that couldn't be discussion, though, I think.
Just thinking. Out loud.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, um, so, that's, I'll kind of put a pin in that, and then the rest of the stuff is all pretty boilerplate.
Cool, following up, track the parade is, ready to go?
Uh, track the parade is the twenty-eighth of November, and we're doing, um. Uh, similar traffic control management for that event.
As well as we did Halloween.
As it been for Halloween?
Yeah.
Yeah. Growing pains, right, we call, um, Halloween was amazing. Do you have to say that?
Great. It's always great.
Did the kids get alarmed at the library?
We did the kids one, like the young kids one, and that was it.
The low grade one?
The low grade one, yeah, it was not scary at all, it was very low grade, and my older one wanted to do the scary one, but.
Nope.
You know.
Executed.
So what in the unnecessary nightmares?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, question?
We, we, uh. Um, like with the, with the school board, we generally, we have a, uh, we don't just release our agenda, we release a. You know, typically there's a board package and then there's a public package, so it includes a lot of materials in it, so the, so the public could. You know, we, stuff except for like hiring documents and stuff like that, just wondering whether we should be. Whether, whether it would make any sense to have the, you know, as publicly post, more than just the agenda itself and some of the materials. Cause then, you know, things like, cause I, cause I could see, you know, people when they say, okay, we're looking at this agreement, I don't have it, and, you know.
Well, I mean, so.
Yeah.
At times you have legal documents that are.
Which, you know, but we, we can make decisions as to what we wanna show, but at the same time, I think that, you know, the, the, you know, it's the old. I think we wanna be as transparent as we feel we can without screwing things up. And so just something to, I thought I'd throw out as a, to consider, cause, you know, I, I think that. You know, people get our school board, you know, our packet of, you know, it's fifty pages and it's like, are people actually gonna go through, but they know they have it if they want it.
I do.
So you think Jim just like throw the, the board packet on website?
I don't know, I don't know, I, I'm just throwing it out to think about whether we, you know, wanna provide some, I, I, I think it wouldn't be. You know, a bunch of the materials we get, it could be really informative to people and they, you know, if they saw it. I'm just, I'm throwing it out to, as a, as a thought exercise right now.
Yeah, and we don't.
Yeah, I think a lot of things could be, something like the draft agreement, I would want to.
I want people to get all up in arms.
Cause someone, people making, right, making a bunch of comments on stuff that might change anyway, I think when we get.
But the, like, the Q and A on Raptor Lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's for the public, I mean, you know, basically.
Right.
That, that was in the last newsletter, I sent that.
Yeah, yeah, but, but thinking about, you know, if people.
I think it's on the website.
And if you saw the whole business due business reports, time manager reports, stuff like that, I think it really could be helpful for people to see what's going on. Um. But, you know, we don't have to decide now.
What about even just the minutes, that we just post the minutes once every.
For a future, it's, yeah.
People can.
Oh, the minutes are on there.
The minutes are up there, yeah, I mean, that could, I feel like that gives you enough, nobody, that people don't go read them.
Yeah.
Right, that really.
It did, it does give you a lot, but people don't, but that's the last meeting. I'm looking at what's, what's happening in this meeting.
Yeah.
It's just a, just a thought.
Yeah.
Good thought, it's a good thought.
Um, any other business? Any other other business?
That was the other business.
Great, great, I get it.
Um, I won't be here next month, I have my company holiday party in New York. And I'm not leaving it to join this meeting.
Boy, we don't, we don't rank, yeah.
O B I skating rite park.
Nice, nice.
It sounds like we're fun.
Yeah, be cute.
I thought we all.
Actually, that same, that same, that, I got a problem there, because that's the same meeting that is the same night as the, took on a great school board meeting.
The sixteenth?
Yeah.
So the other three of you have to be here?
So I'm gonna, you know, I, that's only happened to me once before and, you know, and I tried to kind of get the role to be, it was kind of ridiculous.
Are there any other options? As far as I know, that works for me.
Unless we wanted to shift the December meeting, but they, I hate her. Something.
Then we would have to rewarn the public hearing.
Well, we haven't officially warned it yet, so we could change the day.
Okay. You have to have a certain amount of days, right?
Cause I have a.
Oh, just fifteen?
There, I've got board meetings on the, that, on the fifteenth and the sixteenth school board meetings. But then, after that.
No, well, I'm not here on the twenty-third, probably no one wants to do it on the twenty-third.
No.
Probably not.
Just thinking in case it could go to like a.
Uh, the night just seems like tomorrow.
It is tomorrow.
Or it's possible to kick it over to like the seventeenth.
Yeah? Seventeenth anyways? Would work for me, will you be back?
I think so, but I'm not fully booked with how long I'm staying. Stayed down for. Four days after the party.
So you haven't decided?
Yeah, or like my boss has and said, let's meet the next day and go over this and that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Seventeenth or eighteenth would work for me.
Uh. Eighteenth would work for me this month. I'm not for you. Yeah, either one of those is fun. Eighteenth. Wednesdays, I, I would say eighteenth Wednesday is always a chance of a surprise planning commission meeting for me, so, but usually no one does anything on Thursdays. Yeah, I mean, I just, I have a commitment from five thirty to six thirty, but it won't start till seven, so. Works for me.
Work for you, Rob?
Yep. So it's the eighteen?
Let's drive for the eighteenth.
Make sure it made him. See if we can make it.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll send an email, uh, tomorrow.
Okay. All right, then. I thought we all represented ourselves great tonight, I thought everyone spoke clearly.